This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board, please. At this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our public awards and recognitions. Mrs. Melnuck.
The school board is proud to recognize First Colonial High School's Carly Rudolph, who is the 2017 Virginia High School League Girls Golf Co-Champion. Carly is a repeat state champion. She won the state championship two years ago when she was a freshman and again this year as a junior. This year's championship was an exciting one with Carly achieving something that many golfers don't achieve in a lifetime: scoring a hole in one. She finished that first day tied for third place. The next day, she came back strong, finishing the tournament in a first-place tie, which forced a playoff. After a one-hole playoff, tournament officials declared Carly and the other athlete co-champions. Please join me in congratulating our two-time state champion Carly Rudolph. Chairwoman Anderson, that concludes our recognition segment this evening.
Isn't she gonna make a speech?
That must be her mom.
That's the grandfather. That's Pop-Off.
Dr. Spence, we look forward to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. So tonight, once again, I have five things to share about Virginia Beach City Public Schools. First, I want to extend my congratulations to our Office of Technical and Career Education as well as our Department of Teaching and Learning. They were honored along with the school division with the Governor's Award for Excellence and Innovation in Education for our annual STEM trifecta event. Out of more than 120 nominations, the inaugural award honored 13 outstanding educators and leaders, schools and divisions, and community partners. The STEM trifecta was selected in the category of preparing students for the new Virginia economy, for creating a platform where all students can engage in three types of technical competition: the robotics challenge, the maker expo, and the cybersecurity and cyber innovation challenge. So congratulations and job well done to that team, who I know that Dr. Cashwell is here. Do we have any other members of that team here tonight? We have, and also Bill Johnson, who was here and was up there with us. So congratulations to all of you. Second, the Virginia Beach Special Education Advisory Committee, along with our Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, will host the 2017 Community Resource Fair on Monday, November 13th from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at Landstone High School. This free event is open to the public and will feature exhibits from more than 100 organizations, agencies, and providers about their services and products for children and/or adults with disabilities. At number three, as you know, we've just ended our first nine weeks, and this week was filled with parent-teacher conferences, but we are seeing more of our schools across the division incorporate a new approach to these conferences, which is a student-parent-teacher conference, where students are not only involved in these meetings, but they lead the discussion of where they are succeeding and where they feel they need more support. As we've been talking about the importance of student voice and student agency in our classrooms, this is a great example of what this looks like. This is a grandparent who emailed us this photo from yesterday's conference and added that it was, and I'm quoting here, "amazing," and she shared that the conference was well organized, very well structured, and gave a great deal of information about the class. Her grandson was very proud of his work, and she said, "What an innovative way to communicate with us. It exceeded our expectations." So great work for our schools for continuing to find new ways to engage our students and families. In at number four, I do want to encourage, and I'll reiterate something that was shared earlier in the workshop, I want to encourage our parents and community members to join us at one of two community meetings next week to give input on how we ought to prioritize the modernization and replacement of schools for the next 15 years. At these community meetings, attendees will receive information about school building conditions and enrollment projections, and will be asked to weigh in on what criteria is most important when determining the prioritization of projects. We do want our community's feedback, so if we can mark our calendars for Monday, November 13th at Kellum High School, or Tuesday, November 14th at the Old Donations School. Both meetings are slated to run from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and the public will also have the opportunity to weigh in on the Long Range Facilities Master Plan online through a survey that will go live on November 20th. So for more details about this process, as well as a list of steering committee members, you can visit the Long Range Facilities Master Plan page on vbschools.com. And then finally, at number five, I hope everybody has some red attire ready. Everyone throughout VBCPS is encouraged and invited to participate in RED Day; that is R-E-D. Remember, everyone deployed by wearing red tomorrow, November 9th. By wearing red, we're demonstrating our support for military families and their active-duty loved ones, and spreading a message of recognition and appreciation for their service, not just during November, which is Military Family Appreciation Month, but every day of the year. Madam Chairwoman, that completes my reports.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clark, do we have any speakers on agenda items?
Yes, ma'am.
Kelly Walker.
Hi, good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Spence. My name is Kelly Walker, and I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to discuss the upcoming adoption of the biennial 2018-2019 and 2019-2020 school calendars. I had the privilege of sitting on the calendar committee this fall, and I would like to share with you my impressions of the discussions and offer suggestions as you consider adopting the biennial calendars. Committee developed two calendar options based on the fact that the school may not start before Labor Day and ends with set dates for graduation in June. Through thoughtful discussions from parents, community leaders, and staff members, the committee submitted two options for your consideration. Then, after reviewing the two results of a two-week E-Town Hall from the community and staff, administration chose option one for both calendars. However, the E-Town Hall was only offered during a two-week window, and it is often difficult for staff and members to offer feedback during such a short timeframe. Therefore, I offer that the E-Town Hall did not accurately reflect a large enough sample to give a true measure of educator feedback on the calendar options. Perhaps expanding the E-Town Hall in the future will provide more feedback from staff. Furthermore, the VBA would like administration and school board to consider decreasing the current 22 hours of professional development for teachers. Understanding that both calendars embed professional development, it is appropriate that the number of mandated professional development hours be reduced for teachers. Since the Great Recession, staff have had a lack of sufficient pay raises, an increase in class size and workload, a 5% paid deduction due to VRS contributions, and an increase in out-of-pocket healthcare expenses. It is time to alleviate the workload for those who work so hard for your children every day. Consider reducing the 22 mandatory professional development hours for teachers. This measure will go a long way to attract and retain quality educators to VBCPS, and would greatly boost teacher morale. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers. I have signed up for the hearing on agenda items.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on October 24th. Ms. Riggs has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Williams. The voting board is open. We will be amending our agenda this evening slightly because, due to the fact that we needed to adjust the workshop, and we postponed the navigational markers update until our next, hopefully, until our next meeting after we do agenda planning this evening, we hope to put that on the next agenda for our next meeting coming up. So with that in mind, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as is amended. Mr. McDonald has made the motion. Ms. Manning has seconded. The voting board is open. We have several items on the consent agenda with three resolutions. Mr. McDonald, would you read the resolution for Native American Heritage Month?
Resolution for Native American Heritage Month, November 2017. Whereas the first people to inhabit North America, American Indians and Alaskan natives, have profoundly shaped our country's character and cultural heritage; and whereas Native Americans were the first people to domesticate crops, build cities and communities, and establish great civilizations in America; and whereas the history, culture, and traditions of the United States have been greatly influenced by those individuals; and whereas, through the study of the contributions of Native Americans, students will encounter role models whose commitments and achievements embody the American spirit and ideals; and whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, through its core values, emphasizes the importance of multicultural diversity education within our school division. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognize the month of November 2017 as National Native American Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in the various school activities during National Native American Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this eighth day of November 2017.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. The next resolution is for American Education Week. Mrs. Riggs.
The resolution for American Education Week, November 13th through 17th, 2017. Whereas November 13th through 17th, 2017 is recognized as the 96th Annual American Education Week by the National Education Association to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education; and whereas the creation of this week has encouraged resolutions across the country to help encourage national support of public education; and whereas American Education Week is a celebration of distinguished individuals critical to the success of public education for the nation's nearly 50 million K-12 students; and whereas the National Education Association calls for a week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs; and whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach is focused on encouraging and recognizing the support for public education; and whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools has committed to its relationships with the community and stakeholders through Compass to 2020 to increase public support and involvement in education. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach designates the week of November 13th through 17th, 2017 as American Education Week in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this eighth day of November 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. The next resolution is for the National Military Family Month. Mrs. Manning.
Whereas our country owes the daily freedoms to the members of the armed forces, their family members and loved ones who share in their service and sacrifice; and whereas we celebrate the exceptional service, strength, and character of the approximately 18,000 military-connected students and families in Virginia Beach City Public Schools; and whereas we acknowledge that military families face unique challenges due to deployment, reintegration, service in combat zones, and frequent relocations based on duty assignments; and whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach reaffirms their commitment to providing the resources and programs to support military-connected students academically, socially, and emotionally; and whereas Virginia Beach City Public School Board's Compass to 2020 strategic plan calls for the continued creation of opportunities for military families and community members to purposefully partner with schools in supporting student achievement, aspirations, and social-emotional development; and whereas November is recognized as National Military Family Appreciation Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of November 2017 as National Military Family Appreciation Month, and be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all school staff and community members to initiate, support, and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected youth make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Also on the consent agenda this evening, as item B, is the comprehensive evaluation recommendations for the Sea-Tac Elementary School and Achievable Dream Academy. Item C on the consent agenda is the schedule for regular school board member meetings for fiscal year 18 as adjusted to the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Item D on the consent agenda is the budget calendar for fiscal year 2018-19. Item E is religious exemptions, as were sent out in our agenda packets. Item F includes recommendations from the Policy Review Committee, recommendations as presented at our last meeting on October 24th. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening. Mrs. Melnuck has made the motion. Mrs. Holtz has seconded. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Mrs. Rye has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melnuck. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The personnel report and administrative appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our newest administrator?
I would, thank you. If I could ask George Coker, just please stand up. Mr. Coker has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Green Run High School, a teacher at Green Run Collegiate, and most recently as a professional learning specialist in the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation. And I'm pleased to note this evening that you have approved our recommendation for him to serve as the coordinator of mathematics in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. And that is it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. The next part of our agenda is information. And we have information about the biennial school calendars.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Nolasco.
Yes, I'm Lauren Nolasco, co-chair of the VBCPS Calendar Committee, and I'm here to present you with school administration's recommended calendar options for 2018-19 and 1920. As a quick reminder, our calendar committee is made up of teachers, students, administrators, and representatives from community organizations. We met in early October to develop two calendar options for both the 1819 and the 1920 school year. We presented the board these options as part of a workshop later in October, and then posted it on our E-Town Hall for public feedback. In two weeks, the E-Town Hall had 2,366 visitors and received 1,379 total responses. According to our survey provider, that's the equivalent to about 69 hours of public comment. So a copy of all that community feedback was sent to you as part of your board packet. Our office went through each of these comments to try and identify a stated preference for one calendar option or the other. So let's begin with the 1819 school year. For the 1819 school year, the majority of responses indicated a preference for option one, with the exception of our teacher response group, which indicated a preference for option two. Much like the feedback from our community, there were some members of the countercommittee that preferred option one and others that preferred option two, but the majority of the committee did say that they would support either option. When considering the ability to include a potential weather makeup day, and the board stated desire to have professional learning as early in the year as possible, school administration is recommending option one for 2018-19. As a reminder, this option has 181 instructional days, two professional learning days with one PL day during the staff in-service week, and the second PL day on Monday, October 8th. As we will discuss in a moment, this will also allow there to be consistency in our PL delivery from our current school year through 1920. This calendar will have a nine-day winter break with three days of travel time ahead of Christmas. Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, and Presidents' Day are all observed, and this option allows for Friday, April 12th, to be available for either an extended spring break, or if needed, for inclement weather makeup. And now on to 1920. For 1920, as you can see, the feedback from the E-Town Hall was unanimous in preferring option one from all response groups, and that's including our teacher group. In discussions, the calendar committee was also in full support of this option. So for 1920, school administration's recommended calendar is again option one. This option also has 181 instructional days, two professional learning days with one PL day during the staff in-service week, and the second PL day on Monday, October 14th. This option will have a 10-day winter break with three days of travel ahead of Christmas. Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, and Presidents' Day are all observed. And at this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from members? Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Nolasco. Our next informational item is the Digital Learning Anchor Schools Initiative.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Stephen Cord, a program evaluation specialist in the Office of Research and Evaluation. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the year-two developmental evaluation of the Digital Learning Anchor Schools Initiative. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The purpose of the Digital Learning Anchor Schools Initiative was to develop a group of schools that would operate as learning laboratories and serve as models for a division-wide digital learning expansion. The anchor school initiative provided a laptop, Chromebook, or tablet to students and staff on a one-to-one basis. It was aligned with the goals of the Compass to 2020 strategic framework, including those supporting personalized learning and providing students with flexible learning opportunities. The initiative also informed the development of the division's transformational learning endeavors. The initiative began in 2015-16 with 11 schools. Four schools were added for 2016-17, bringing the total number of participating schools to 15. Helping to guide the initiative was each anchor school's digital learning leadership team, which included the principal instructional technology specialist and other select teachers and staff. This evaluation was designed to inform the initiative as it continues to unfold. We examined data related to the implementation of the initiative, including perceptions of professional learning and instructional progress since the initiative began, as well as stakeholder perceptions and cost. Stakeholder surveys were conducted in April. Survey response rates for each group are shown on the slide. Additional data were collected to compare anchor and non-anchor schools using the school climate survey, which was given to students, staff, and parents. Finally, a survey asked the anchor school leadership teams to rate the initiative's alignment with best practices. Results from these two additional surveys are detailed in the full report. When asked about the implementation process overall, with the exception of one survey item for one group, at least 74% of staff members agreed that the initiative at their school was carefully planned, well-organized, and successfully implemented. While agreement levels regarding specific implementation factors were high, and some improvement was noted from the first year with regard to technical issues, concerns of a technical nature continued during the second year. They were mainly related to network connectivity, content filtering, and the need for additional technical support. Also, it should be noted that the agreement rates on these three items, as well as several other survey items, tended to vary across individual schools. Although these individual differences become obscured when the schools are grouped into elementary, middle, and high school composites, differences nonetheless existed in how the initiative was implemented at different sites, which was not unexpected, given the experimental nature of the learning laboratory concept. Despite the differences in how the initiative was implemented at different schools, at least 50% of the respondents agreed that their experience was better or much better than in year one. Staff from the Department of Teaching and Learning facilitated professional learning through division-wide meetings of each school's digital learning leadership team, which included the instructional technology specialists. The ITSs then provided training for the teachers at their school who were participating in the initiative. As shown on the slide, survey results show that elementary school teachers were most positive about the professional learning, followed by the middle school teachers. High school teachers' perceptions were notably lower, with agreement levels ranging from 67% to 78%. At least 96% of elementary teachers and at least 80% of secondary teachers agreed that the initiative led to increased defectiveness and/or efficiency in various instructional activities, such as small-group research and problem-solving, independent learning, project-based instruction, and instructional planning. The next several slides address progress toward meeting four teacher and five student outcomes that were developed by the digital learning leadership teams prior to the start of the initiative. The four teacher outcomes focused on providing authentic learning experiences for students, empowering students to choose their learning path, providing personalized learning opportunities, and fostering teachers' professional growth. In response to multiple survey items related to these teacher outcomes, 83% to 100% of teachers, ITSs, and administrators agreed that these outcomes were occurring. The first student outcome focused on students being active partners in choosing their learning path. Students and teachers were asked if students made more decisions about their own learning since receiving their digital device. The highest level of student agreement occurred at elementary school, with the lowest at high school, and higher percentages of teachers and students agreed with the survey item. The second student outcome was that students would gain more of a global perspective. A majority of teachers and students at each school level agreed that using their devices helped students gain this perspective. The third outcome was that students would use digital tools to collaborate in support of their learning. At least 76% of students and teachers at each level indicated students used their devices to work together on class assignments and projects. The fourth outcome was that students would demonstrate academic mastery and growth through digital work. Among both students and teachers, perceptions that having their own device gave students greater opportunity to show their knowledge were most positive at the elementary school level. The final outcome focused on students becoming responsible and ethical digital citizens. High percentages of the teachers at the elementary and middle school levels agreed that having a device helped students to use technology in responsible and ethical ways, but agreement was lower at the high school level. When asked about their overall satisfaction with the initiative during its second year, at least 79% of the staff, except the technology-support technicians, reported being satisfied with the initiative. At least 72% of students and parents also reported being satisfied, with the highest satisfaction levels at elementary school. This slide presents the additional cost of the initiative during 2016-17. Funding sources included end-of-year reversion funds, the operating budget, and grant funds. For 2016-17, 99% of the nearly $1.7 million expense was from VBCPS funds, with a small portion of professional learning costs covered by grant funds. Hardware costs for devices accounted for 83% of the total expense. The year-two evaluation led to five recommendations. The first is to continue the initiative with the modifications and recommendations two through five. The second recommendation is to continue working toward having at least one full-time instructional technology specialist at each school, and to review the adequacy of the TST allocations as the one-to-one initiative progresses to all schools. The third recommendation is to schedule professional learning as early as possible before implementation so that staff, especially at high school, will have as much time as possible to plan their digital instruction to make it as effective and efficient as possible. The fourth recommendation is to continue to optimize the digital experience by ensuring that device, network, and infrastructure issues are promptly addressed and resolved. that device, network, and infrastructure issues are promptly addressed and resolved. The final recommendation is to conduct an evaluation update during the 2019-20 school year to monitor the continued progress of the one-to-one initiative as it expands and its continuing alignment with evidence-based practices. At this time, Dr. Amy Cashwell, Chief Academic Officer, will share the administration's recommendation and response.
Thank you. Good evening. The administration concurs with the recommendations shared as a result of this evaluation. Specifically, we do agree and concur with the modifications as listed in Recommendations 2 through 5. In regard to Recommendation 2 for funding full-time ITS positions, you may recall that is part of last year's evaluation. The same recommendation was brought forth. And subsequently, as part of the budget planning cycle for this current school year, we did request nine additional instructional technology positions to bring everyone up to a full-time position. We're appreciative and thank the Board for approving six of those positions to be able to make more of our schools have full-time positions. And then, of course, going into this budget planning cycle, we will be requesting three additional ITS positions, which will bring the remaining six schools who have half-time positions to full. In regard to the TST allocations and support that came from this evaluation, please note that the Department of Technology is reviewing the way those positions are allocated to ensure that schools have not only the instructional support they need, which is delivered through the ITS, but the technical supports as well. So, they'll be looking at the way those positions are allocated to schools, as well as the structures and support systems for the TSTs as they engage the schools in working to support their needs from the technical aspects. In regard to the second recommendation for professional learning, we absolutely concur that not only do we want professional learning to start well in advance of the school year, we want it to continue in a fashion that's job-embedded. This was also a recommendation that was a part of the Year 1 Anchor School study. And so, in response to that, we instituted some summer summits, digital learning summits. So, in June and August, we held for teacher-by-teacher professional learning in regards to the digital transition. Those were very heavily attended, wildly popular. Given this recommendation, we're going to continue that this summer and work to even make sure, particularly this addresses the high-school audience, making sure we ramp up some of those courses that are offered, particularly geared for our high-school teachers, and make sure we're advertising those so teachers know those opportunities are available to them really in advance of the school year starting. So, we've got several to add to the list this year, so we're excited about that. In regard to the next piece about infrastructure, I would note that absolutely, again, instructional supports are necessary, but if the technical aspects become challenging, that's something we have to continue to be mindful of. So, the Department of Technology, DOT, has absolutely continued to monitor this as we've moved forward, not only with the anchor schools, but planning device rollout across the Division. And so, they, in turn, have invested up to $2.5 million to date with both division-network upgrades as well as school wireless upgrades. And they continue to look at ways to respond to issues promptly as schools bring them up that are technical in nature. And lastly, we certainly appreciate the plan for continued evaluation of digital expansion as we move into the next school year. We'll certainly look for the results of the next evaluation to continue to help us shape and hone our practices as we move forward with digital expansion in the school division. Take any questions you have.
Any questions? Mrs. Frye?
So, can we assume, excuse me, in terms of further expansion, that we would evaluate where we're at with -- because it just struck me that there is work to be done reading, you know, and you've really capsulized it all. So, before we bite off more than we can chew, that we're going to focus on the present schools and getting the support needed, both on the instructional and technical end. I'm not suggesting that expansion come to a standstill, but you understand what I'm getting at?
I agree. It needs to be done in a way that's measured. And so, we, as you know, up to this school year, the first two years of the anchor program included 15 schools. We did add 39 schools this year with Chromebook expansion to begin to really implement some of the lessons we learned from Year 1 and 2 of anchor schools, but didn't move forward, of course, with the division-wide rollout, and have looked at continuing to roll out in chunks as we move towards 2020, because part of this work is to support that goal too, that multiple pathways goal in Compass 2020. So, absolutely, we're learning as we go. And again, that's why we, I think, appreciate Number 5 here, that we're continuing to study not just the anchor program, but that Year 1 rollout. So, we are in what we would say the first year of expanding beyond the anchor schools, but we've done so in a way that's measured, and we'll continue to study it as noted here.
Mr. Edwards?
The expansion, are we looking at trying to standardize eventually across the system, and are we at least now looking at Chromebooks?
Yes, that's correct. And that came from the data from our anchor schools. We looked at a number of devices. If you'll recall, that first year, we had a number of devices, including tablets, at play, and we looked at the survey results across the anchor schools and did decide to move forward with the Chromebooks for a number of reasons, including cost. And so, for the 39 schools that we brought onboard as part of Phase 1 expansion, we did use Chromebooks and plan to continue to do that as we move all of our schools onboard in the next few years.
Ms. Melnick?
So, of course, I was saddened to see that only 8% of the parents responded in the survey, but as the parent of two boys in a digital anchor school, I can tell you that it's amazing. And I don't think high schoolers really understand what they have, because it's part of who they are every day, but I can tell you what I witnessed is truly astounding, and I'm very pleased with what's going on in our digital anchor schools.
I have a question about the Chromebooks being compatible with the teacher laptops. That was one of the things that teachers have explained to me that they've had some problems with. Has that been resolved?
Yeah. Initially, schools were given the option for teachers to continue with their Windows laptops. The student devices we moved forward with were Chromebooks, and we also purchased those for teachers. There are a couple of schools of thought. One, you want teachers to be able to experience firsthand exactly what the students are experiencing and be able to be well-planned for that. On the other hand, some expressed the desire to have Windows devices because they were used to some of the tools and features there and weren't 100% sure of how they'd be able to begin to do those things with Chromebooks right away. And so, we provided schools an option of having one or the other. As the school year came to begin, we found that many teachers who had their schools had chosen Chromebooks had some difficulty navigating some Word documents. Our curriculum teams did work, and this was particularly at the elementary level. Some of the links and things were providing difficulty for teachers. So, we did two things right away. One, our curriculum team, with the help of several ITSs, worked round the clock to remedy that, and they did. But in the meantime, we also, the Department of Technology, worked to contact all of the schools who had Chromebooks in place for the teachers and say, "Would you also like Windows devices?" And so, many schools took advantage of that, and so the teachers had a Windows device to work on as well as the Chromebook. So, they didn't miss an opportunity to learn what the students would be experiencing, but also could continue on with what they needed to. And we've continued to provide that option as we make the transition.
Thank you. That helps a lot. Thank you very much. Mrs. Holtz?
One of the recommendations you say is to optimize the digital experience, but I've been hearing for at least four years that -- because you also mentioned here that you want the issues to be promptly addressed. A lot of times, you'll have equipment failures, especially with the whiteboards. There's nothing worse than setting up something where you're going to use the computer and all of a sudden, half of them don't turn on, or there's a problem. But I've been hearing about this for four years, and I still hear it. So, what do you plan on doing to help that? I mean, hire more techs? Is that the answer?
Well, I think certainly any of the concerns that have come up that are technical in nature may speak to some of the lower satisfaction levels, particularly that were higher in all groups, but not with the TSTs in regards to how well did this rollout go in your building. And I think it's a learning to manage larger numbers of devices. And so, I think as DOT continues to work with the TSTs, who report through them, on systematizing some of those structures of support, it may be a matter of looking at how many TSTs are allocated to buildings to help with that issue, but also in some of the other processes that go along with that.
Well, one of the things, it really doesn't have anything to do with personnel, is if there's a part, if the whiteboard breaks down and there's a part needed, we can't use it. It's been two months and the part has been ordered and we don't have it. I know we're transitioning out of that, but that's a major problem.
Well, certainly, whiteboards are probably another topic, but absolutely, you're right. It's part of the situation. We don't want technical issues to impede instruction in any way, shape, or form. So, I know there's a team looking at DOT at a replacement cycle for our whiteboards in regards to how to make that happen more quickly, and I'm sure they could provide detailed answers, if you need those, about the replacement, pending replacement of the whiteboards.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, and Mr. Corte. Our final information item this evening is the legislative agenda for the 2018 General Assembly Session. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Pleased to present the 2008 Legislative Agenda that the Legislative Committee has approved by consensus earlier. It is a four-page document, and so I'm not going to read it verbatim, but kind of go point by point on issues we're supporting or opposing. The full document, edited based on our conversation earlier today, will be part of the packet for action at our next meeting. Under Budget Section, we are pointing out, well, first, we request that recent investments in education remain untouched. We do point out that spending per pupil spending in Virginia is down 628 per pupil. A big budget item, though, coming up is re-benchmarking. As you know, in the summer of every odd-numbered year, the Virginia Department of Education provides the Governor and General Assembly with an estimate of re-benchmarked costs of essentially what the state should be paying for education, and we support the full funding of the biennial re-benchmarking of the Standards of Quality funding formulas. We're also asking that instructional support positions of Standards of Quality be uncapped. These positions include social workers, school counselors, school psychologists, instructional support personnel. This is really providing funding directly to the classroom and giving teachers additional resources to support students. We support the elimination or funding of $16 million in unfunded mandates that come from the General Assembly. We are opposed to any change in delivery of special education services or special education funding that would shift an even larger portion of the funding responsibility to locality, which currently, for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, is $13,400 per qualified student, and we have 7,900 students. We support efforts by the General Assembly to work with our federal delegation in encouraging them to fully fund their portion of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. For lottery fund usage, we support the additional flexibility that we have received recently to spend lottery proceeds, but we are opposed to any measure that would shift Standards of Quality expenses or other reoccurring costs to lottery funds. Lottery funds should be used exclusively to supplement current public education funding and not be used to supplant ongoing SOQ-funded programs. Under dual enrollment, we support any effort that would allow school divisions and local community colleges to negotiate individual rates for public school students who through their school division take a dual enrollment course offered through the local community college. We also support the establishment of clear transfer maps for each public four-year institution for dual enrollment courses. For reform of assessment system, we support legislation that's responsive to the recommendations of the SOL Innovation Committee. We support the reduction of the number of required tests, and we support the replacement of current SOL assessments with performance-based assessments. We also support teacher, principal, and superintendent accountability systems that include additional measures beyond standardized testing. We are, along with the state, trying to look at ways of addressing teacher shortages, and one of the things that we focused on was supporting a moratorium on any new requirements for teacher licensure and recertification, as well as streamlining the licensing process by allowing for more electronic submission of documentation. We are opposed to any legislation that would require any portion of state or local funding to follow the student when a student chooses to enroll in a virtual school outside his or her school division. We support online and blended models that incorporate individual need of the student, as well as full-time state-operated virtual program through Virtual Virginia. For charter schools, we are opposed to any legislation that would remove the local school board's authority to approve charter schools within its boundaries, including any change to the Virginia Constitution or legislation that would give the Virginia Board of Education the authority to create regional charter schools. Interscholastic athletic programs by non-public school students. We oppose any legislation that would allow non-public school students to participate in interscholastic programs in public schools. Under student safety, we support legislation that promotes, first say, we oppose limiting options to safely manage schools, including the ability to suspend students whose behavior warrants sanction, but we also support legislation that promotes alternatives to suspension and funding at the elementary school level to support these alternatives. And that is a brief rundown of our legislative agenda. I just want to thank Legislative Committee members, Mrs. McLeod and Mrs. Melnick, as well as Dr. Bergen, senior staff that works with us, and Joel Andrews from Kemper Consultant, who is also here with us to help answer any questions. We did have a larger discussion during our workshop earlier today. With that, I will pass it back to the Chair for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Lauren, Ms. McLeod?
Mine isn't a question. It's just to continue to support what Mr. McDonald has brought up here. What's important to understand, this is not us asking specific for legislation to go forward. It's saying that when legislation comes up, this is how we, as a division and as a school board in Virginia Beach feel that it shares our opinion and our thoughts on the things. And what you hope to gain by this is that when you provide this to a delegate or senator or whomever, that when those legislative items come up in the General Assembly, that they're familiar with where we feel, and it might cause them to call us and say, "Hey, this is what's come across our desk, and should we move forward with this?" So, it creates an opportunity for good dialogue between we, as a school board, and our General Assembly representatives.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod. Appreciate that. Mrs. Manning?
I just want to reiterate that we did have a larger discussion in the workshop. For those that may not be familiar with what we said in the workshop, and I'm not going to reiterate all of that, Mr. Edwards, but I just want to state for the record that I do not support several of the items in here as they're currently written, specifically with the virtual schools, charter schools, and the student safety, specifically the portion regarding student discipline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do we have any standing committee reports? I think that was it, wasn't it? This concludes our formal meeting.